Join says, hey, it's uh. Seven o'clock on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, the day after Valentine's Day. Hope we all, you all had an enjoyable one. Uh like the call this meeting to order and Janet, can you call the role, please?
Sure, Councilmember Diaz.
Present.
Councilmember Juan.
There.
Councilmember Wolf.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Tillman, I understand is coming in. I don't see her on my screen, and Mayor Cloven.
I am here as well. And with that, Janet, will you please go to item number two and roll the meeting? Protocol video and hopefully Vice Mayor Tillman will be in in the time being.
Due to COVID nineteen, this meeting will be conducted as a Zoom webinar pursuant to the provisions of the A B three sixty-one, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is also being webcast on the City of Clayton's website. The mayor will call upon its council presenter staff and other speakers by name, and ask that they speak clearly and state their names before giving comments or remarks. Persons participating via webcast and Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members of the public participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial star nine and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. Telephone attendees will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their name, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received by the Clayton City Clerk by five P M. Today will be entered into the record, but will not be read out loud. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they are free to do so and should raise their hand and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. The chat feature is not active. In order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is up to date.
Thank you, Janet. Very much appreciate that. And with that, welcome Vice Mayor Tillman. Glad you're in the house. And we'll move on to item number three. And that is the pledge allegiance and you could lead us, Councilmember Diaz, and appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Much appreciated. And with that, we'll move on to item number four, the consent calendar. Is there any item that Councilmember desires to pull and talk about separately?
Jim Diaz would move approval.
Excellent. Appreciate that, Councilmember Diaz, but we will move to public comment first and see if there's anybody in the public that wishes to have a to state their what they'd like to say in public comment on the consent calendar. Janet, do we have any hands?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Excellent. Thank you, Janet. Much appreciated. Let's bring it back to the council. Are there any, any, any other questions? If not, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Diaz. Do I have a second out there?
I can.
I believe that's a second by Councilmember Wolf. And with that, Janet, could you please call it roll?
Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Juan.
Hi.
Councilmember Wolf.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman.
Yes.
Mayor Cloven.
Yes. Thank you. And with that, counts the item number four, the consent calendar is closed and we'll move on to item number five, recognitions and presentations. And item five A is the proclamation declaring February as Black and African history, American history month. And if you don't mind, Council Vice Mayor Tillman, could you please read this proclamation?
Uh, sure. I'd be happy to. Thank you. Um, declaring February is Black and African American history month, whereas in nineteen twenty-six, famous historian Dr. Carter G. Woodson established what would become Black History Month to bring special awareness of African American accomplishments and contributions to American history. And whereas African Americans have contributed to the rich fabric and diversity of America and have made significant strides in civil rights, law, medicine, technology, business, food, music, literature, education, sports, entertainment, journalism, and the arts. And whereas in sixteen nineteen, the first documented enslaved Africans arrived at the English colonies at Old Point Comfort, Virginia on the English ships White Lion and Treasurer, and these individuals were sold in exchange for provisions, while others were transported to Jamestown where they were sold. And whereas between eighteen sixty-three and eighteen sixty-five, hundreds of black men fought in the American Civil War and died as enlisted men in the United States colored troops, seeking life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness as a free people. And whereas after eighteen sixty-five and the ratification of the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth amendments to the United States Constitution, the complete freedom and civil rights granted to previously enslaved men, women, and children were subverted by brutal Jim Crow laws preventing their ability to live as fully free citizens and pursue life, liberty, and happiness as guaranteed to white citizens. And whereas between nineteen fifty-four and nineteen sixty-eight, African American activists, in particular women, spearheaded the civil rights movement, fought for social, social justice, constitutional rights, organized sit-ins, workshops, boycotts, and grassroots campaigns. And whereas attacks on the fourteenth and fifteenth amendments continue to persist in the twenty-first century for African Americans, and the City of Clayton devotes its resources to fulfilling the promises of the Emancipation Proclamation and the U. S. Constitution. And whereas today, African Americans continue to make gains in public office, education, and professional fields, and as entrepreneurs, as well as fight for an inclusive vision of liberty, justice, and equality for all. And whereas the City of Clayton, California, will join with the nation in celebrating National Black History Month by honoring the essential contributions, sacrifices, and accomplishments African American and black people have made to the U. S. and part of the, and part of American history. Now therefore, therefore, I, Holly Tillman, Vice Mayor, and on behalf of the entire Clayton City Council, proclaim February as Black and African American history month in Clayton, California, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Thank you, Mayor, for that honor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Tillman. It's appreciated that you did so. And with that, item number five is closed and we'll move on to item number six, which are reports. And we'll start off with six A with a report from our city manager. Raina, stage is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. I have a few items to update you on this evening. Um, the first, uh, next, starting next week, you will likely notice uh, some fencing going up in the Grove Park uh, around some of our turf areas. And then, um, after that, we will be aerating, seeding, fertilizing, et cetera, and giving that grass a time to get settled in. So you'll see fencing for probably just about two months while we get our turf ready for a vibrant event season in our uh, flagship park downtown. So just so you are not surprised when you see that fencing go up and you wonder what the heck? It's all for a good cause. Uh, second up is that City Hall uh, reopens to the public on uh, other than just an appointment basis, starting tomorrow. Um, consistent with um, state and county um, mask mandate changes. Um, the only time indoor masking will be required in City Hall is for anyone who is unvaccinated or who chooses to wear a mask for own, for their personal protection or comfort. Uh, so we're excited about starting to take one more step in the direction of hopefully uh, being able to have more normal City Hall operations. And on a related note, the last item I wanted to talk to uh, is our march toward uh, in-person meetings, which we are looking to uh, resume in uh, March of this year. Um, consistent with uh, where we are seeing guidance from the county. Um, it looks like we will aim for our goal-setting session of March twenty-first to be an in-person meeting for council and staff. We'll have a, a virtual option for the public. Um, and then at the April fifth meeting, uh, we should have a fully open um, uh, council meeting for uh, the council members, staff, and members of the public who wish to attend. But we will also still have a hybrid uh, or virtual option for participation from the public uh, as we go forward. So those are the planned openings for in-person meetings. Um, I would say I would, you know, guarantee that we're going to go forward with those. But if the pandemic has taught us anything over the last two years is that I would be foolish to make those guarantees because we can't, the, the bug is sometimes smarter than we are. So I'm going to say that those are, that's our plan. And unless we're uh, bugged out, we will uh, move forward with those. So I'm excited to uh, say that we'll be moving forward with those. And that is what I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Raina. I appreciate the report. That's awesome news. Let's go on to item six B, the city council reports. And if you don't mind, Vice Mayor Tillman, you are up first tonight.
Okay, um, thank you, Mayor. Let's see. Can we get all my papers here in order? I had quite a few meetings. Um, I attended the mayor's conference, and I will give you the honor of giving the update for that one. I also listened in uh, for a brief moment when you presented at the um, Bart redistricting meeting, which was the, I think it was the night before the mayor's conference. Um, and I was pleased to hear while I was on there that there were other um, other Bay Area residents who were also concerned about where um, Clayton kind of sat and what we were thinking about redistricting in regards to Bart. So I was pleased to hear that there was some support in that we were um, uh, we were opposed to option C, and I will also let you give some more details on that as well. Um, I attended the Library Foundation meeting last week. Um, there are a couple of items that they would like us to um, take care of. One of them had to do with um, it looked like there were two cracks that possibly are near the entrance that they wanted us to take a look at. Um, and I think that there was also some paint issues. I will send those to you, Raina. Um, but if you just a brief update on that. Um, I reminded you guys that our longtime librarian was retiring. Um, her last day was at um, that last Saturday in January. So Karen is no longer with us. Um, let's see. I also attended my first um, Community Services Policy Committee uh, meeting. That was last week, and I will give you guys. It's kind of a detailed update. I won't be too long. At least I'll try not to. Um, there were several issues that we were going to be looking at this year. Um, all of it goes in, uh, in conjunction with the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three state budget. Um, a lot of the issues that the governor is well positioned to address are supporting local government efforts to protect residents, um, addressing public health impacts of COVID nineteen and stabilizing local economies. Um, his proposed two hundred and eighty-six billion dollar budget will follow through on previous commitments. Um, it's projected that for forty-five point seven billion um, is in surplus, twenty point six of that um, is discretion, for discretionary purposes. Many investments of interest for cities are one-time investments or expansions of existing programs. Um, and ongoing state funding and sustained financial partnership are crucial for cities to address, uh, address California's biggest challenges. Um, also of that proposed budget, um, it's following through on the prior budget's homelessness commitments. Um, there is eight billion dollars um, set aside possibly for that, for childcare, five point eight billion for childcare programs, and for parks, uh, seven hundred and fifty-six point nine million for the Department of Park, Department of Parks and Recreation. And the reason why that's important is because those are some of the issues that we address as a, as a community services uh, policy committee. Um, we did, they did do a survey prior to our um, first meeting last week. And out of the um, responses, the tally was uh, homelessness and wraparound services was percent of the um, respondents wanting to address that. Parks and open space uh, came next, followed by children, childcare, and youth. Um, and then fourth in line was seniors and aging issues. Um, and then fifth was emergency preparedness. And I'm giving you all of these in order so you can understand where we ended up at the end of our three hours. COVID nineteen impacts uh, was followed by that. City recreational activities, public libraries, and then arts and cultural resources. All of those are what our policy committee touch and what we decided at the end of um, our time together. And um, we started off with top four issues that they had brought to our committee that were identified by the committee and proposed work program. And we decided that in addition to the homelessness and wraparound services, parks and access to open space, the children, childcare, and youth programs, I mean, the senior aging issues, there was a lot of discussion about including libraries because that affects the youth as well. Um, and in particular literacy. And so we decided that we wanted to include literacy um, and have umbrellaed under that library so that we can address the youth program. So that's how we're going to tack that in. And then we added a full fifth um, item that we want to address, and that was the emergency preparedness um, in regards to disaster recovery as well, because we're all in a high fire danger here in the Bay Area. There were other areas in Southern California that expressed that they were concerned about that as well. So as a policy committee, we're going to address those five issues. And our next meeting is on April twenty-eighth. So I'll have more details for you guys at that meeting. Let's see. That's here. I had meetings with uh, Raina. I also had some meetings with um, with the mayor. And I think that was it. I attended over the weekend, the reelection kickoff event for uh, DA Beckton, uh, similar to attending the Marion Ox event that I attended in September, just to stand. It was great to actually meet people um, that are part of Cal Cities that I've seen on all of our meetings for the last year and meet them in person. Um, so I met a lot of mayors and vice mayors for the surrounding cities and that are in the Bay Area. And that's my report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Tillman. Councilmember Juan, it's your turn for a report, please.
Uh, no report this week.
Thank you, Councilmember Juan. Councilmember Wolf, you have a report request, please.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Um, in addition to my normal meeting with uh, our city manager, I also had a nice conversation with our city finance director. Um, and of course, I met with you, Mayor, a couple of times this week uh, in the last two weeks, I guess. Um, and I had several emails and phone calls this week and uh, a couple of them complaining, uh, complaints, a couple of them inquiries. Uh, discussed all of these things with Raina, and most of them have already been taken care of. There's a couple of things still on the docket. And uh, let's see, uh, oh, the uh, the Bart redistricting meeting, I, I attended that and um, I, I gotta say that you did a great job, Mayor, in convincing or putting forth our um, position with regard to where we need to be in, in the central county instead of in the east county with that, with Bart. And uh, and uh, I will say that you even uh, swayed some of the public that was uh, that was in attendance and they were talking about it. Uh, even the people that were supporting us being in the east county, some of them actually changed their position. But uh, I know you're going to give more of a report on that, I'm sure. And then uh, finally, uh, the Library Foundation, I know Holly mentioned the Library Foundation, but don't forget to sign up and join the Library Foundation. If you haven't paid your dues already for this year, uh, get back out there and pay your dues. It's a great organization to belong to, to keep our library going. And there are benefits, including uh, getting some advance notice on the book sales and things like that. So uh, it's a good thing to support our Library Foundation. That is my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolf. And Councilmember Diaz, you're next up.
We've had several meetings myself with the uh, city manager uh, early uh, in February, and then again today in preparation for tonight's meeting, and also the police chief as we uh, move forward with the art and wine uh, uh, event, which is scheduled for April twenty-third and twenty-fourth uh, downtown. Uh, the committee has met. We're uh, putting together a really great uh, event that I know that a bunch of people are really looking forward to. In fact, we've gotten a real strong indication that uh, vendors and other uh, groups want to participate in that event. And it's looking like it, uh, it's really going to be a huge, uh, huge event on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth of April. Uh, I want to commend uh, Mike and Julie Gelphy uh, on the eleventh of uh, February, they again held a celebration life for a local guy by the name of Teddy McDevitt. Teddy left us way too early and um, very much from all the youth sports and other things uh, around the community. And uh, he's been missed, but every year, uh, Mike and Julie put on a great uh, celebration of life for him. Um, again, met with the uh, uh, art and wine group. We did a little bit of inventory work down at the shed, getting ready because uh, things are again looking very positive for that event for the final date to remember. April twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Thank you.
Thank you, Member. Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Much appreciated your report. I know that right after our meeting last, our last meeting, I jumped right into the Bart uh, question, the redistricting question. And there was a phone call the following night on the, the second about redistricting, and I stepped in as public participant and stated our unanimous opposition to uh, being changed from District One into District Two East County. And, and both Councilor Wolf and Vice President were correct. There was definitely some public sentiment and sympathy towards our position. I subsequently transmitted a, the letter as well as a sharper email to all of the Bart board members, all of the Transpac board members, all of the mayors. Um, MCT, uh, is any, anybody I can, I could think of that was relevant to this decision, they received our letter. Subsequent to that, there was two more maps that were, were put out, uh, Public Map one oh one and Public Mac one oh two. Um, both those maps, one of them, one oh one kept us in District One, and the second one uh, put us in the District Two. And again, taking Clayton out of Central County, Central County. I am going to be on a phone call tomorrow night to state our position. All district um, directors will be in that phone call, and I'll be very clear in our position. And there'll be another vote um, the following week, which I will again be there for public participation to state our position. And because, because of where we, how strong we, we oppose that as unanimous council, I've also reached out to several other uh, mayors and um, Councilmembers who could help us in that quest. I mentioned during our Transpac meeting. So I, I'm actively trying to be very, I'm actually being very clear about what our position is as a city that it is not appropriate by any way, shape, or form for us to go into District Two, and we'll see how effective that can be. I did attend the mayor's conference uh, as my first mayor's conference, really. And there was a presentation by Bart, which they were talking about the reduction in their ridership and the improvements they made during the pandemic and what their uh, plans are for future of art stations. I am really looking forward to the mayor's conference being in person. Uh, I can tell you that Vice Mayor Tillman and I have been virtual council members for a long time. And it, it, since we started, and it'll be very nice to actually have these, these relationships and meet these people that we've been talking to on Zoom, as Vice Mayor Tillman said, it makes a big difference. Um, on that following Thursday, I went to Transpac meeting. And Transpac again is our transportation advocacy group for Central County, um, where we're talking about our plans to get to Bart and how do we do so? And um, we are represented by the, uh, from, from um, Wonder Creek, Martinez, Pleasant Hill, and Concord. We're, we're right there in the middle of Central County in that group. And again, it's a great group to really be a part of and to strategize uh, transportation planning in our, in our, in our area. It was interesting, we got a chance to uh, review the audited financials, but by saying company that audited our financials. So the, the format I retrieved, our agenda was very familiar. Um, I had personal conversations with Tim McGallion, the city of Concord, Amy Worth from the city of Arinda, and our Bart Director, Deborah Allen, not to mention city council members and, and our city staff. Um, it's very good again to, to be out and talking to other people. Uh, it can't just be insular. We're, we're, your representatives out there in the community. Want to be, I'm, I'm excited that the city has heard us. They have designed and created door hangers for both ARPA funding and for the housing element and the upcoming housing element. Um, those door hangers are going to the printer and should be available um, the week of uh, February, hopefully before February twenty-sixth. Um, the plan at this point is to get a group of volunteers from all over the community to help distribute those. We have maps of the neighborhoods. We have indications of the number of homes, and we'll break it up into specific neighborhoods. If you want to be a volunteer, we'll make sure there's somehow a signup list where you can meet in the Grove. I think tentatively, our plan is to meet on Sunday, February twenty-seventh, about nine o'clock in the morning. We'll make sure there's donuts and coffee available. Come on down, grab a packet of flyers. So again, there'll be two door hangers, one for ARPA, which is green and orange, and another for the housing, which is green and gray, and they're different sizes. So they'll be very clear. And the plan is to put a door hanger campaign, not a door knocking campaign. We're not out talking. We're just making sure you have the information. It's less likely you'll throw it away if it's a postcard in the mailbox, but you'll actually look at something that's hanging on your door. I have received a lot of gratitude from businesses who have received their second check in uh, the mail from our Clayton Cares Act. And if you don't think we're making a difference, you haven't been talking to the right people who've been affected by COVID. And I, I, it, it, it is grateful to be on the city council that felt so strongly about helping these, these small businesses in our town. And I, I, again, I, I feel very, I feel a lot of gratitude and receiving the, the thanks that I'm getting. I have received three unsolicited proclamation requests um, from entities I don't know of, to read a proclamation to city council. One has been related to school choice, another regarding recognizing the PTA or PTA appreciation month. Another one regarding uh, prescription drug abuse. Now, I, I, I appreciate these proclamation requests, but I don't feel strongly that that's something that we, I need to do. Uh, I'm putting it out to my fellow city council members. If you receive a proclamation request that you do feel strongly, please reach out to me and reach out to Raina, and we'll make sure we get it on the agenda to consider. I tell, we'll tell you personally right now, um, I am not going to read a proclamation request during my term unless I talk to you at city council and agree that that's something that's appropriate to read. I know that there is this thing as a mayor's program to do so. I'm just not going to choose to do that for the proclamations. I will make sure that we are all in agreement that something that's appropriate uh, to, for us to do. Lastly, uh, at the last meeting, we were requested to address potential uh, essential worker pay. And I am going to put that off until we have the second tranche of funds that have come in from, from ARPA. And I appreciate the question. I want to let, I know I heard that. And with that, that's the end of my report. And I believe we are moving on to item number seven, which is public comments for non-agenda items. At this point, it's your chance as the public to raise your hand and speak about anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Um, I do request that if you're going to address the city council, please do it as a whole. This is not a time to really address any one individual city council member. We are a single operating body. If you do happen to address a, a single council member, do it very respectfully. We're all doing our best to represent the city. And do it kindness, give your fact-based conversation, and please, no profanity. We do have children listening. Let's do the right thing and demonstrate what our city is about. And with that, I'll open the city comment. And Janet, do we have any hands?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any hands raised on this item. Oh, one just went up.
Thank you.
Roy, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak. Roy, if you can please unmute.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Roy, welcome.
Okay, hi. Good evening, all. Uh, yeah, I, I, I've got just a few comments regarding the reports that were just uh, given. And uh, I just want to say a couple of things. One is that many things were said by each one of you and uh, regarding your, what you did or didn't do, what you did altogether. And uh, I didn't really get a lot of, you know, outcome from them. Um, you know, what's that deliverable behind it, number one? The other thing too is that, and if you could please provide that, it's one thing to attend the meeting, but so what? Okay, um, and what you're deliverable, how is it going to add value, benefits to the, to the town and the citizens? The second thing is that also is that um, I didn't hear one word, you know, from the council members regarding budget. Okay, I heard a lot of meaning that was the uh, you know, the uh, with Okay, I heard a lot of meetings, that was the, uh, you know, the, uh, with the the city manager, I met with the vice mayor, I met with the mayor. Uh, I but I didn't hear one thing about, I met with my peer, I met with my colleague. Okay, one, two is stepping up and saying, you know what, we came together as a group, and we were talking about the high, what's in our face, what's in the face right now of Clayton is budget. And that, there was really no discussion about that in those reports that you just that were just given. And so where was the council in the sense that I met with my, I met, I met, I met with Jeff Wan, I met with, uh, you know, with the vice, with the mayor. And or we met as a team, and why? So we can give the budget the high priority it deserves. You you know, one of the budget items, uh, or in the budget today, you're going to be discussing thirty K outgoing, outflow. That's a lot of money, okay? And 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 the budget has been hot for years. And it was, and it and it was white hot all of last year to date. And 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 so, and and all the inactivity that's happened since, you know, a lot of words are spent, but not a, not a lot is being spent on that budget. And so now we're in a kind of a crisis situation, oh, now we're going to go get a, you know, consultant, et cetera. And then I asked if indeed a consultant comes in, I haven't heard anything about what's your objective, what's a clear objective, what do you really want to accomplish? What will be achieved by it, by that, by that, by that object, by that consultant? And how can we measure that against previous historical kinds of, uh, you know, effort with consultants? Uh, and I think the budget is in, is in the council's face, it's in the taxpayer's face, and give it the priority it deserves, and I do not believe being constructive, being cr- critical, be it, give it the priority it deserves, work with your team, work with your colleagues.
Roy, your 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 words are heard loud and clear. Um, those conversations will be had in the next few months on a very regular basis. We are prohibited from talking um, with another council member or the, um, or more than one council member because of rules of the Brown Act. It's not that we don't care or don't desire to, it's just prohibitive from a legal standpoint, and that's why we do it in city council meetings, and you're going to get a taste of those in the in a couple of the budget, uh, uh, action items tonight. And it's definitely top of mind, and thank you for your comments. Janet, do we have any other hands raised for this item?
I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Thank you, and Roy, I appreciate your comments, and with that, public comment is closed with item seven, and we'll move on to item eight, public hearings for which we have none. And then move on to item number nine, action items, and we'll start off with item nine A, which is the audited annual comprehensive finance report, ECFR, what is the word for that? Of the City of Clayton for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. You got a nice little preview of that a couple of weeks ago, and looking forward to hearing more. Reina?
Uh, I was just going to say Janet and I were trying to get everybody promoted who needed to be promoted, but I see now that they're both here. And with that, I will turn it over to Catherine Corseckar, Finance Director, and Bryce Rojas, our auditor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Catherine.
Good evening, Mayor Cloven, Vice Mayor Tillman, and council members. Um, first, I just wanted to take a minute to thank all of you for your service and public engagement. It's very important. Um, without your engagement, we wouldn't be able to do our jobs. For your consideration this evening and your review are the audited financial reports for the period of July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. The audit was performed by Proper Accountancy Corporation, and the lead auditor was Bryce Rojas, who is here with us today to present his findings. Just a reminder, I started my employment with the City of Clayton on October fourth, twenty twenty two, well, after the June thirtieth, twenty twenty one fiscal year end. Before my arrival, there was an interim finance director who was an, who was employed for the four months prior to my arrival. So she was here just for a very short period. Um, it's important to note, just when looking on, looking at the report on internal controls, specifically the journal entries that we had to make to effectively close the fiscal year twenty twenty one and complete the audit. Um, proper accountancies examinations were made in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States. The standards applicable to financial audits contained in governmental accounting standards and the state controllers' minimum audit requirements for cities in California. Those requirements, um, require the auditor to plan and perform an audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatements. The audit also includes assessing our internal accounting principles, followed by management, as well as evaluating the overall financial statement presentation. The City of Clayton has received an unqualified clean audit opinion from Proper Accountancy for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, verifying that our financial statements are free from material misstatements, and that the city, city's financial personnel have followed proper accounting principles, and that the financial statements have been presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Um, our staff report that you all have, um, notes the following items. There was a decrease to the general fund ending balance in the amount of around, right around fifty five thousand as a result of lower than expected investment results and a decrease in business licenses, permits and fees, fines and forfeitures and closures, mostly as a result of the closure of of COVID. As a result, the general fund's unassigned fund balance decreased to five point eight million. And the following funds had a net increase to their fund balances. Um, the Huda gas tax saw an increase of a hundred and fourteen thousand to end at five hundred and nine thousand. The RMRA gas tax fund saw an increase of a hundred and ninety two thousand to end at six hundred and twenty thousand. The Landscapes Maintenance District saw an increase of twenty two thousand to end at just over a million. The Grove Park saw an increase of fifty eight thousand to end at four hundred and sixty five thousand. Um, Measure J saw a very small decrease of two thousand dollars to end at eighty six thousand. Um, Endeavor Hall, which is the city's only proprietary or business-like operation, saw a more significant decrease in fund balance than other years, primarily due to COVID closures. There were no rentals during last year. Um, and the normal depreciation expense. So the total net decrease was around seventy four thousand, and it was about half and half, half because of no business income and half because of depreciation. Um, Endeavor Hall still ended at a positive ending fund balance of nine hundred and twenty three thousand for the year. Um, now, I know this has been looked at many times, but it would be good to examine a more sustainable operating model for this fund um, with at least a minimum goal of breaking even. Um, the Rainy Day Fund was established in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one in order to set aside excess funds to be used for unexpected costs that may arise during the year. At the end of fiscal year twenty one, it had a fund balance of a hundred and seventy seven thousand. When examining the total financial picture of the city, we must look at the government-wide financial statements. In the long run, increases or decreases to this net position serve as a useful indicator of whether or not the financial position of the city is improving or deteriorating. For the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, the total government net position decreased by eight hundred and ninety two thousand, with governmental activities decreasing by eight hundred and seventeen, and business-like activities decreasing by almost seventy five thousand. It's important to to remember that this is, these are, this is to, this is totally due to um, depreciation expense and, um, the pension liabilities, and this can change over time. So just because we see this big decrease this year, doesn't mean next year the same thing will happen. If we add, you know, any type, if we purchase things or we have, um, any kind of capital improvement projects that add value, that will help offset the depreciation expense, which basically will help the the net position. So just because we saw this big decrease this year, doesn't mean it's going to do that on an ongoing basis. Um, we just do have to watch that. Um, so as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, the city reported a total government-wide ending net position of forty five million, of which the largest portion totaling almost thirty million is classified as net investment in capital assets and is not in a liquid form. Thirteen million or twenty nine percent of the total government-wide net position is classified as restricted. The remaining government net position of almost two point four million, which is five point two percent, is reported as unrestricted and may be used to meet the ongoing obligations to citizens and creditors over the long term. This, the net position is a good indicator of long-term financial health of the city. As stated previously, it is reported on a full accrual basis and includes all inflows and all outflows of our economic resources, which include our long-term pension liabilities, depreciation, and other long-term assets and liabilities. The net position from year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty was three point three five million, which is a nine hundred and seventy nine decrease from fiscal year twenty one, twenty to twenty one. And this is primarily due to this, these pension, the pension liabilities and depreciation expenses. So now I'm going to pass it over to Bryce for him to present his findings.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Let me share my screen so I can do my presentation. Are you seeing my screen, the audit presentation? Yes, okay, thank you.
But we're seeing your view, you need to switch your screens.
Thank you. Is that better? Yes, great, all right. As Catherine mentioned, my name is Bryce Rojas. Um, I'm the audit partner at Cropper Row, also Cropper Accountancy, and we perform the required um, external audit for the city. And as Catherine also mentioned, we were able to issue an unmodified, or also known as a clean opinion, which is the highest quality outcome of an audit. And the city's net position decreased. Catherine already went through a lot of these numbers, but I'll briefly go through them again. The government-wide net position or equity of the the city decreased about hundred, eight hundred and ninety thousand down to forty five million. And of that, two point three was unrestricted. For the general fund, uh, there was a fifty five thousand dollar deficiency of revenues over expenditures. And that, um, the fund balance decreased down to six point one at June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. And of that, five point eight million was unassigned. Uh, we, we do not audit the internal controls of the city, but it's impossible for us to audit the city's financial statements without noticing and reviewing parts of internal control. And during our audit, we noticed noted some material weaknesses in the internal control, namely the continuity of personnel. Um, over the past few years, there's been a lot of turnover in the finance department. And during, as Catherine mentioned, she came in in October, there was an interim finance director that came in in July. And so neither of those individuals participated in books throughout the fiscal year, but were in charge of closing them, so there was a loss of, um, knowledge in the accounting department, and so that led to, um, little extra time closing the books. We also noticed that the general ledger closing procedures that happen monthly, quarterly, were some, sometimes were happening, sometimes they weren't, and more often than not, they were not being locked. The books were not being blocked every period that was being closed, and so that led to some discrepancies in the books. And due to the complex nature of the notes receivable and notes payable at the city, they were not closed at year end, so took some extra time closing those. And we also noticed that the fixed asset module balance was not agreeing to the general ledger fixed asset, fixed asset balance. And all these resulted in these material weaknesses that we noted, and we discussed them with um, with management, and they they have a plan going forward and how to do better and implement more procedures to, um, not have these material weaknesses. And we also noted, spoke with management about performing an IT review and strengthening the internal controls and operating efficiency around IT. As, so net position for the government-wide of the city, there is about thirty million in capital assets. Thirteen million was restricted to special projects and programs. And the remaining portion unrestricted is about two point four million dollars. And so if you were to, in other words, if you were to pay off all of your debts and get all the money coming into the city, you'd be left with about two point four million dollars. And for the general fund, the fund balance at year end, where the equity was six million dollars, of that, a hundred and twenty one thousand was non-spendable in non-spendable, spendable form, such as prepaid expenses. Um, a hundred and seventy seven thousand was committed to future projects, and this is actually the Rainy Day Fund that Catherine mentioned. And so that leaves about five point eight million dollars as unassigned. And here are some visuals on the government, government-wide assets and different outflows. Uh, what comprises the fifty two million dollars in assets, large portion, about fifty seven percent is capital assets. And the next largest item is cash and investments, which is about twenty seven percent at fourteen million. And then there's also investment in affordable housing and notes receivable, each at about three million, and then there's related to pension and OPEB, a million dollars of deferred outflows. On the liability side, the largest by far, eighty percent is the net pension liability. That's about six point, um, five million out of the six point six million in liabilities. And then the next largest is the net OPEB liability, which is five hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. And related to the pension liability and the OPEB liability, liability, excuse me, are the deferred inflows, which are about three hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. And here's a visual of the net position that we, uh, the components of the net position that we talked about, thirty million net investment in capital assets, and then thirteen and restricted, and two million unrestricted for the total city net position of forty five million dollars. On the general fund side, the assets, the largest component of assets for the general fund is cash and investments at about ninety, ninety percent of the six point five million dollars. And the next largest would be accounts receivable at about five hundred thousand dollars. And then on the liability side for the general fund, uh, there's total liability, liabilities of four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, of which two hundred and sixty is deferred revenues, and ninety one thousand is accounts payable. And compensated absences is about eighty two thousand dollars. And here's a breakdown of the six million dollars in equity or fund balance for the general fund. The largest component is five point eight million in unassigned. And then a hundred and seventy thousand, like I said, is committed to the Rainy Day Fund, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is non-spendable. And just additional notes, um, the pension and OPEB liabilities are a big part of the government-wide balance sheet. And we're in, here are the balances for those five million in net pension liability with related deferred outflows or an asset of nine hundred thousand dollars. And deferred outflows is three hundred and forty four thousand. For OPEB, the liability is five hundred and thirty five thousand with related deferred outflows of fifty five thousand and deferred inflows about twenty five thousand. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions for me or anything I can do?
I have one or two. Back, uh, the first set of investments, fourteen plus million, which on the first chart you mentioned, versus the, uh, yeah, there you go. And tell me that, what's different from that on the general fund of five point eight cash and investments? What's the difference of those two? Are they part of each other?
So the general fund is part of this fourteen million.
Okay.
This fourteen million also includes the Endeavor Hall and all the other special revenue funds and capital project funds.
Okay. And so when you say cash and investment, so Endeavor Hall is an investment, correct?
It's a capital asset.
Yeah.
Capital asset, okay. Okay, and so how is that, is it, it's not part of the cash or is it part of the investment? So that's my question, I guess.
So the, the building itself is part of the, the capital assets and twenty nine million. But then the Endeavor Hall also has some cash and liabilities. And so that's also included over here.
Okay, all right. And how, how often are we reviewing our cash and investments? How, how, how often are we looking at them to see how they're doing?
That's a question for Catherine.
Yeah, on, on at least um every other day or at least three times a week. Since I've been there, I've been looking at them a lot because I'm new and I'm I, I am looking at them all the time though.
Well, my, my reason for asking this, uh, Rain and I were talking about it today. And uh, I was debating whether to uh suggest this. And this is just a, a suggestion. When I served as the treasurer of the United Way to the area, we had much larger uh cash and investments over there. The, I don't remember the numbers, but they were in the thirty plus million total. We actually had a subset of the board of directors, a volunteer, a non-compensated investment committee that reviewed that and then provided a board input uh once a quarter. And uh, I was, and I, Rain and I thought, or I thought she sort of concurred that maybe somewhere along the line, we might want to consider uh such a thing. And I would bet we have uh any number of excellent uh resources in the community that could be recruited to sit on such an, a volunteer investment committee to kind of review it uh with a, 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 a good set of uh uh focused uh financial eyes and then prepare a quartal to report, which I know, you know, I think that's one of your goals to try to do that, is give us a report uh more frequently. Uh, have you ever had any experience with that?
With investment management?
Yeah, within, yeah, we know, no, with the investment committee assisting you.
The most experience I had was investing. My, my, my old boss did all his own investments of like a six million dollar portfolio. So it wasn't a huge portfolio, but he
Yeah.
Did that, that was about it.
No, and again, I, I just suggest that as an additional aid to uh uh, our, our financial management and uh that it could be something that we might want to consider. It's only something I wish to uh throw out for future consideration. Thank you.
Yeah. And just so that you know, we have the investment policy. Um, and I think Rain and I have been working on um, drafting it. Um, and um, and our investment advisor that we have um through UBS, he, he's pretty much in contact with me daily about different things, but you know, our, our portfolio is not, you know, terribly diverse. It's really just CDs and um federal, you know, there, there, there are some federal bonds and CDs and that's about it. So it's just when CDs come due, reinvesting the money in new CDs. Um, but um possibly looking at some of the current CDs that we have that are really, really low rates. You know, maybe selling those early, you know, there are different things that we could do to improve upon our returns, I think.
Absolutely.
Leif and Camp are, you know, very, very low right now and there's not a lot of hope for those. But um, maybe we shouldn't have as much at Leif and Camp. Maybe we should change that, you know, policy also. So um, I would appreciate.
You, you've, you've helped me a lot, Catherine. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
If I could just add, in note two of the financial statements in the disclosure portion, it gives a, a breakdown of the components of the cash investments where they're held at.
Great, thank you.
I, I have a couple of questions, actually.
Go for it, Jeff.
What was um, what was overall materiality on the engagement? I was curious.
It depends on the fund, it depends on um covering why there's different amounts that we use.
At the government-wide level. Yeah, for both, I guess, individual item and then tolerable misstatement.
Uh, I don't have that on me at the moment, but if you'd like to reach out to me later, we can discuss.
Okay, because I guess I was asking about that in the context of the post-close JEs that were here. I, I think I'm trying to scroll down at the same time here. I think they're at the back, right? After the management.
There, yeah, it's the very end.
Yeah, so I guess there's you, these are broken up in a couple. There's like the, the PJ's, I guess we're calling them now, the ones that are just identified but not recorded.
Yes.
And then there's some that I guess you, as the independent auditor, had um proposed or identified. I think there's like half a dozen. And then there's um, I guess the client ones are the ones that we identified during the course of the audit, right?
Correct.
Okay. And, you know, the magnitude of some of these entries, I'll just, my, my question really stems from are the, like, some of these smaller ones are probably not, you know, they're important, I will say, but not like critical if you're making a five or ten thousand dollar entry. But like, you know, in total, in the grand scheme of things, when we get to, I think there's sixteen pages of this. You know, it's uh five point one million ish in, in total. So I'm curious how close that gets to uh materiality.
Well, some of them were material and that's what led to these material weaknesses that we identified. They helped us identify these material weaknesses. Does, does that help your question or no?
Um, I mean, material weakness is, is not necessarily just a dollar magnitude though, right? It's just the, the um the possibility that something would not be caught that could be material.
Right. And yes, that's correct.
Okay. And you mentioned in your report that as a result of some of these um, these entries that ran the gamut here, that additional time was required to perform the audit. Do you have a sense of like what the delta there was?
Again, I caught off guard for that one. It's probably forty hours, fifty. Don't quote me on that, but that's.
That's fine. I mean, just a sense, not a, not specific, just a general sense is fine. And I guess, do, I guess we, we cover the fees for that or do we have a not to exceed?
Uh, there was none, a not to exceed amount.
Okay, cool. And then I guess so the comment around the, I'm, I'm kind of jumping around a bit, so it's fine if uh, if I'm not, I don't have a good flow here. But um, the change in net position, I think it was like eight, eight hundred and change-ish or so. Um, I think in the report, I identified about half or so was related to um depreciation expense. So is, are we saying that we essentially did not replace fully depreciated assets? Is that what we're trying to identify here? Is there, are there assets or items that we have deferred that? I guess this is more of a question for Catherine and, and Rain and not, not you, Bryce. Um, are, are there items that we've deferred that we should not be deferring or is this like an expected wind down? And, yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense like, are we expecting that to ramp back up or? Because usually depreciation, depreciation of assets would essentially go on a cycle and then you'd, you'd replace over time. So it'd kind of be a wash, but here we're identifying it as a key item, so.
Um, so uh, I think, and I'll just start in on this and really this was a relatively unusual year where we didn't add uh much or invest much in um uh in asset replacement or regeneration in a way that we have both before and I would expect to afterward. Um, and so we saw that um larger uh, you know, true depreciation expense with no, no no add-on to um the asset base. I think um, there are areas where we're not investing enough in um deferred maintenance or other um types of asset investment. Um, and we'll be talking about those as we go into the budget process and the second ARPA round, et cetera. Um, so I think both this FY twenty one was a somewhat more unusual year um in terms of overall um investment in assets and um and there are things that we're not sufficiently investing in. So it's kind of um both and uh to your question.
Okay, um, thank you. Yeah, I guess my, it just raises a concern like if we've under um, underutilized and then as we look forward, if we, as a result, we are expecting to have a ramp up in spend to replenish those assets that have been end of life. So that's, that's where I was going with that.
There's no um immediate um specificity that I can add to that in terms of, oh, there's something that we just put off um replacing. You know, more so than we would have. Um, I think it's just a general underinvestment. Um, the one thing I would have to check is there may be a single vehicle uh replacement that got pushed into the following fiscal year. And I'll just have to see when we paid it. That may be another, you know, sixty thousand uh that, that affected that swing that year. Um, but it's a more um um, it's a more diffused uh underinvestment rather than a single point that I can say, oh, there's this thing that we didn't do that resulted in that. It's multiple things we didn't do in smaller ways.
Okay. And then the pension component is just it's like voodoo over at purse, so that's fine. I, I guess the other, the main, main thing though, I think, is the identification of the material weaknesses and the significant deficiency. So I think we're talking about one, two, three. Four MW's and one significant deficiency. I guess the signature deficiency is kind of like a broad thing. So I don't know if I identify that as just a single item. I guess Bryce, in your work, were there any items that were on the fence that did not make the cut in terms of either material weakness or significant deficiency?
It's a good question. And I, I don't think so. I think we summarized deficiencies here. But if there is something that I, I think of, I can reach out and communicate a little bit more with management on that.
And I guess I, I ask that because typically when you have a significant, I'm using the word twice, amount of material weaknesses, it, it doesn't exist in a vacuum and you have other like add-on things that would qualify as significant deficiencies and they, they don't necessarily rise to uh material weaknesses. So that's why I'm, I'm asking about that. Did you consider the impact to the overall audit and the opinion, the magnitude of the material weaknesses of, of controls in, in how you, you know, are able to opine?
Yeah, we always do consider that, but.
Can you walk me through that thought process a little bit?
Yeah, at the end of the day, we look at the numbers and we, we feel comfortable with where the numbers are at. There's no um, material errors. At the end of the day, then we feel comfortable with an unmodified or a clean opinion. Um, the material weaknesses, often I'd tell you what happened to get to that, those good numbers. So the original trial balance that we were given had material errors, misstatements. But through the journal entries that were booked, we got to a, an area where we felt comfortable with an unmodified opinion.
Okay.
And that was mostly due to the inconsistency of employees that were in, at the city for that period of time. Because the audit started when the old interim finance director was still there. And I kind of came into it in the middle of what she was doing.
Oh, for sure. I mean, I, I don't think.
If, if, if we would have just started the audit a little bit later possibly, but then we wouldn't have been completed by now. So um, we probably wouldn't have had nearly this many um adjusting journal entries. Um, but really the books were not closed when they were given to the auditors. So he was patient with us and kind of worked with us to, you know, get them to a point. So a lot of the, the, these, you know, after journal entries could have been prevented if the books had been closed in a timely manner.
So, so is that, is it fair to say that if we were to go back in time, Bryce, you, I think you were here on the engagement last year and the year prior. Did, did we properly close the books timely um in prior years? Or has this been a? Is this an ongoing issue?
This has been an ongoing issue for the past four years or so. Over the past four years, there's been.
Because you've only been on the engagement three years, right? Or is it four? I don't remember.
I've been the audit partner for the past two years.
Okay.
But the firm has been on board.
The firm has been a while, yeah. Yeah, so I guess, I mean, historically, I understand the continuity of personnel. However, like, if we're just talking closing the books, um, that's, it seems like, from what I'm gathering, that that's not necessarily a continuity of personnel matter because it, it occurred, you know, if you go back in time two years, it's, I think that was still occurring. Is that accurate?
Yes, but there was also, in the past few years, there's been multiple city managers and multiple finance directors. There's been, I think, two full-time finance directors and two or three interim finance directors. And the interims have been around to close the books. So it, it's been a late process over the past few years.
Okay. Um, I mean, it it's, it's concerning and that's why I'm, I'm asking about it. Um, and then I, I noticed that we, in, in our, when we met as a, as a a subcommittee? No, um. I don't know. As we met at, at a committee, as a committee.
Yeah.
We, there was a mention of um there was a, incident of fraud that occurred. Did that not, did I not, did I miss that in this report? Did it get changed or did I just miss it?
That occurred after the year end.
Okay.
And so it did occur while we've been working with um management on the audit.
Okay, because I, I would, yeah, I guess I, it's just a uh whether or not that that gets included as a material weakness as well. And I didn't see it identified, so um. Yeah, I guess, you know, my I understand there's been a lot of turnover and that this is mostly just a general comment and um well, we could, we could save that for later. That's not really a question. So um, we could talk about that later. Um. Yes, that, that's uh, I think that's all of my questions at this point.
I have one there if I can piggyback off of um Jeff's.
Bryce, go ahead.
Thank you. I just had one question regarding the books closing. Um, and I think you mentioned that um, it's probably occurred in the last four years or so. When was that caught? Or have you known that at each, each of the times that you've come before the council um and done your report or, or given us your feedback?
So I, I think you're referring to the books not being locked.
Yes, not being locked.
I don't think it's been an issue in past years because we did not identify, we, we didn't identify that as an issue in prior years. Um, but I think when Catherine came in, correct me if I'm wrong, Catherine, you were trying to reconcile and you're having difficulty because prior periods during the fiscal year had not been locked.
That's correct. Yes. And I, I mean, I think that it's an issue with the soft. It, that, so the software, our accounting software that we have has two components to it. It has a cloud-based component and then it has a database version. And the cloud-based version looks, you know, and, and is a lot easier and more user-friendly to use. But then the database version is like the backend version of it and that has more controls in it. And the two versions work. And the two versions work together. So they're constantly like syncing with each other supposedly, which I, I think that they actually do do that. But the thing about it is the books in, in the cloud-based version look like they're not hard-closed for multiple years and they're not. But then if you go into the database version, there's a soft close of them for some of the years. And then there are some gaps that I'm working on. But I, I mean, I felt I, I couldn't move forward and work in a set of books that, you know, we don't lock and like physically lock. So, so you know, you could close the books and closing the books might mean something to one accountant. It might mean something different to one person than it does to another. And for me, you actually need to lock them and hard-closing in this software program, you can't ever go back. So the goal is to have everything hard-closed and, you know, on an annual basis and then never be able to reopen those years once the audit is done. So part of the plan of the cleanup project to get us on track is to work with a technologies firm that specializes in Blackbaud, Financial Edge, NXT and to help us correct these kind of long-term, longstanding problems. One of the other things is that the bank reconciliations are never, were never done within the software. So they were always done outside the software and that is not uncommon for this accounting program. I've already been talking to this, this firm that's going to help us. And a lot of places get so frustrated because there are three components to the bank reconciliation module instead of just two. Most bankruptcy reconciliation modules have like two components to them where they're just reconciling from the bank to the general ledger. This one reconciles from the bank reconciliation to the general ledger to this like sub-ledger. And so the sub-ledger can be off at times. And so they're working with us to get that sub-ledger correct. So, you know, it, it's something that, it, it's not just the city, our use of this program. It's the, the program has historically, and I think that that's why people weren't doing that. Weren't using the bank reconciliation module in order to close, you know, on a monthly basis and then on a quarterly and annual basis. So it's my goal to get the accounting software working so that we can do that and feel comfortable, you know, going forward rather than having to do it outside of the system.
And is the, oh, go ahead, Bryce, go ahead.
I was just gonna add, uh, prior to fiscal year twenty twenty one, the bank reconciliations were done outside of the module. Then in fiscal year twenty twenty one, they were performed in the module. And then Catherine came to find that there, it, it's difficult sometimes. So that's part of the issue, that it had been done one way and then it switched during the year and then it switched back.
So Catherine, then, um, going forward with how, working with the tech firm that you're working with, do we have the appropriate system for what? Is the system that you're working in now currently, the appropriate one for us to be using? And not saying that there's anything wrong with using that one. Is it efficient for your daily use? Or is there another system that you would recommend?
No, I don't, I don't think that we should change software programs at this point. I think that it should, as long as we can get the bank reconciliation module to work correctly. It should be fine going forward. And then we just make sure that we're closing regularly. And, you know, when I report out to a council, I'm not going to report out on some books that are not closed. They have to be physically closed. And to be honest, at my last job, the books had never been closed for twenty years at the last government that I worked at. So I don't think it's terror, you know, I think that closing, closing someone might mean, you know, to one person, okay, it matches the audit, we move on, but I actually like them to be physically locked. And then I move on. So no one can make entries in previous periods and it's much easier to know what you're reporting out, so.
And then can you walk us through briefly the procedure or the plan that you have or that you need to be putting in place, just so that there's some continuity? Should you be sick one day and you're not here to actually close the books or do the audit? Like what, what are our procedures going to be going forward?
So, um, Catherine, before you do that, Bryce, could you stop staring your screen so we can all see each other? Because I'm really struggling to manage here with that. Ha ha, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks. Go ahead, Catherine, sorry.
I'm sorry. So, um, so as far as for continuity, we are in, in the process of engaging with a CPA firm to provide services. And first they'll be, you know, kind of help us with cleanup and with getting up to date on everything. And then, then they would have, you know, a kind of a general succession oversight role. So they would always kind of be there in the background to provide services if needed.
Okay. Um, and then I, not to beat it, but to go back really quickly earlier when I asked about the, if the software was appropriate, you mentioned if we can, it'll be fine if we can get it to work correctly. How will we know if it's working correctly? Like what, what guarantees or assurances do you have that, that it, that it will be doing that? And if not, will you just come back to us and let us know that we need to switch to a different one if it's too expensive? Is that the plan?
Um, yes, and just so you know, the general ledger will, will balance to, it'll, it'll be zero when you do your bank reconciliation. So your general ledger, your, your, your bank reconciliation is always zero. And in the program, it, it was always zero, but the general ledger would also be zero. So we could provide those reports on a, you know, here and maybe twice a year or something so you can see that it's working.
I, I don't necessarily need to see it. I was just curious what you meant by get it to be, it'll be fine as long as we can get it to work correctly. And I wasn't sure what get it to work correctly means.
So to get it to work correctly, I meant to, for the bank reconciliation module to work correctly, as in everything's balancing and everything's zero. And once we have that correct going forward every month, it should be pretty simple. It should always balance. So it's finding that one point where it didn't and going forward from there.
Okay.
How far off are you?
It varies by month, right? In September.
That's not a good sign.
I know, so September is like twelve thousand off, which isn't terrible. September.
I wouldn't, at twelve thousand, I wouldn't spend a lot of time, I would just.
But if you go back, it changes, so that's.
I mean, you just gotta cut it off and, and move it, go forward. I mean, you'll, you'll, you'll be a lot more efficient. That's typically what you'd do for small dollars. Um, I, I guess, I, I just a couple of comments on what you said. You know, the definition of what closing the books means is, I would say it's pretty standard. I don't, I don't think anyone thinks the books are closed if you could actually make entries. Maybe non-accountants, but closing the books means only one thing. How do you roll fund balance if the books aren't closed and entries get made in prior periods? Like your fund balance won't roll properly. I mean, I would think that'd be a really big indicator that something is wrong. Like in month one and in every subsequent month thereafter. I mean, fund balance isn't gonna tie. Opening and closing, right? I mean.
Yeah.
That's a problem. I would, I would think that's like a critical, like stop everything problem. But when you say that we're going to engage a firm to, I, I wasn't sure if I heard correctly. Are they going to assist with succession planning? Or are they gonna serve as functional backups in the case of a succession being necessary? Because that's a whole different function.
I would say at first they, they will familiarize themselves with, you know, our accounting systems and processes and procedures. And over the next six months, they'll probably be much more involved and then they would be more at a high level. So they'd be more in the background.
Yeah, because I think small, you know, small organizations will always struggle with proper succession planning. It's just, it's just very difficult when you don't have a lot of people to spread. But, you know, for, for an asset firm to be effective in doing that, I mean, they, one, they have to be somewhat engaged on a regular basis. And two, that costs a lot of money. O- otherwise they won't be current and then you're not really buying any value. So I, I'm not, I, we don't need to get into the, the merits and the merits of that plan. But I mean, that is, that's a pretty, it could be a significant outlay while at the same time giving, you know, a sense of security that may not be justified. So I, I would, I would just think about that. But, okay. Yeah, I, I, all, all of this makes my heart hurt a lot, so. Okay.
Are there any other questions from council? If not, it's time to open this up for public comment. If there is anyone in the public who'd like to raise their hand and talk about this, please do. And you'll have three minutes to make your points. Janet, do we have any hands?
I do have a hand raised. Frank, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Am I on?
Frank, you are on, you got three minutes, go for it.
Good evening, council. I, I actually watched the, the sub, the ad hoc committee meeting as well. And, you know, with council number one, it makes, it's, it makes my heart more than hurt. Hearing one comment that was just made that at a prior government job for twenty years, it didn't close the books and that our wonderful city, which may be imposing a tax increase on us real soon, also doesn't close its books. A government agency monitors me and makes sure that I close my books every month. And if I fail to do so, if I fail to comply, that same government can come shut me down. But here, government is exempt. And this is why people don't trust government. This is, it's disheartening to hear what I'm hearing here. And I, most of the public unfortunately doesn't delve into this deeply. I do have questions. I heard, overheard earlier about the investment account. Rena, you talked to the UBS gentleman on a daily basis. Who oversees these investments? Who makes the buy and sell decisions? Is it an advisory-based relationship or is it a standard brokerage relationship? Commission-based, that sort of thing? Why don't I ever see any reporting to the city council about what goes on with these investment accounts? You know, every other nonprofit that I've ever advised has some sort of committee overseeing this sort of stuff. The fraud that occurred last year, and I was affected by it, I haven't seen any reports to the council about that. Someone stealing forty-five thousand effectively from we, the people, the citizens, that's not a good thing and probably should have been brought up to the city council, even if staff had it under control. The fact that we had to file an insurance claim to get that money back doesn't sit well with me either. Bank fraud should be caught early. So I'm deeply concerned about the city's finances, how they're being overseen, what this council plans to do about it. And, you know, knowing that there's a potential tax increase coming, yeah, none of this sits well with me and I doubt it will sit well with the citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Janet, are there any other hands for this item?
I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Thank you so much, Janet. With that, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to the council for conversation.
And just as a reminder, what we're asking is that the council by minute order accept the annual comprehensive financial audit. So that will be the motion and action that we are looking for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder, Rena, I appreciate it.
And there's, there's no harm in, in approving that and accepting that. Correct?
We don't really have a, I mean, it's, it's, we don't really have a choice.
It's pro forma. I mean, the, the audit is done, it's filed and it's, you know, the, the council has been presented the information. Technically, I suppose if the council took no action, the audit would still exist and be in place. But we would like to have the council's acceptance. And it doesn't say you're overjoyed, it just says that you've accepted the annual comprehensive financial report.
But before we do that, I, I just have a couple of comments. You know, when we took ARPA, you know, that, that's going to, I'm pretty sure we will be required, be subject to additional requirements for audit, for accepting federal funds. The requirements for that audit are different than the requirements for this audit. They, it is more of, if I recall correctly, it's more of an internal control-focused audit where we want to document our controls over handling the funds, dispersing the funds, eligibility of use of the funds and all that other stuff. It's not necessarily a dollars-based materiality audit, it's a compliance slash control audit. We failed this one. If this were a control audit here, I think we would fail in the current instance because, you know, one material weakness is pretty bad, four are more than pretty bad. So, you know, there's risk there. And, you know, ultimately, you, you have, I think you have many outs to remediate issues. So that's good. But ultimately, if, you know, if you, if you handle the federal money so poorly, they, they can ask for it back. So that, that's a, that's a risk. And so I would, you know, as we look at this on a go-forward basis, I, I don't necessarily think it's super valuable to re-litigate like all the various things that happened. That's not, I mean, that's, that's important, I guess, to understand where you're coming from, but it doesn't really help you fix stuff going forward. You know, what I would, what I would, what I would like to see is a plan that identifies what is going to change and like how we're approaching it. Kind of like a project plan that shows like, here's all the things that we've identified. Here's the timeline on when we'll get them. Here's the resources that we need to do it. And, you know, here are the, the risks associated with that and the challenges and, and what hurdles we, we actually have. And then from there, you know, we can use that as a monitoring device so that if we say there's X, there's X, Y, Z things over, you know, A, B, C period, at each of those A, B, C milestones, we could evaluate the progress to make sure that things are getting remediated. I think that's probably, that's how I would, I think that'd be the most productive thing to do. Because it's really hard to overstate the seriousness of these things in what's going on. I mean, I, I have serious concern. I mean, Bryce, you're on the call, so I, I, I will not question the judgment of our auditors. However, I, you know, I would say it, it's, it's surprising to me that we would have an unqualified opinion with this many material weaknesses in controls. So, you know, I think it's a judgment call, but because it's a judgment call, I think that judgment could just as easily have gone the other way. And that would be bad, that would be bad for the city. So I, I would suggest that we take it seriously and that, you know, we need to do, we, I, we, you know, I, we need to do a better job of monitoring like any audit committee would do. And I, I just, I don't know that we've done that historically, but I, we, we should, so.
If I, Mayor, could just respond briefly? So in the staff report, at the, toward the very end, there is a kind of a three-component outline of a plan for the pieces that we know we need to address. And a comment that since the audit committee meeting, those are the pieces that have been put in motion already and that we will come back with a more complete plan, including more specified scope as well as timeline and dollars. So you're absolutely right, we are absolutely taking it seriously. And in the, you know, fifteen days since the audit committee meeting, we were able to get as far as those components, but we are still working on, on more detail. Secondly, and I think it came up in the audit committee meeting, there was a request for more frequent reports to the audit committee or more frequent meetings with the audit committee. And Catherine and I have just. And Catherine and I have discussed that and we are prepared to set up some regular meetings with more detailed reporting so that we do have that much closer connection to an audit committee as well as probably more frequent reporting to the council as a whole, but not on the same level of frequency and, and, and detail probably as the audit committee. So that will also come back. You'll see requests to set those meetings as well as the more detailed project plan in addition to the very high level outline that was included in the staff report. And so I think we're, Catherine and I are very much in agreement that what you said in terms of what we need and putting it in place is, is where we're headed. And it's just in the fifteen days since the, the audit committee meeting, that level of detail is not, is not in place yet. And so, you know, that, that will be coming as, as we get through some of the first stuff with the software firm. So we can understand getting our software in to do what we want it to do. And then we're going to start working through those other issues. But Catherine has already started putting some of those components in place and then we'll bring that forward.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah. When we talk about regular cadence, like I, I wouldn't be wedded to a specific, like, we have to meet to talk about. Usually, you know, with a long, with an ongoing project, you know, a, a project plan with a status report out and then take the materials as read and then basically be Socratic and just take questions on it, I think is inefficient use of time. I would just think about, there's, there's ways to accomplish the same that, you know, are as efficient as possible. So I would just consider that as something to, to think about.
Well, do, thank you.
Any other comments from the city council? I just want to acknowledge the hard work that was put in by our budget audit committee. Thank you, Vice Mayor Tillman and Council Number One. I also really want to acknowledge the hard work for Fireman's Finance Director Catherine and, and as well as our city manager. Clearly, we have some challenges in front of us. There is no indication in the comments that I've heard tonight that we're shirking responsibility or, or assuring those challenges. We're taking those head on and I appreciate your candor in that and looking forward to seeing what comes next of your plan to make these, to deal with these deficiencies. If there are no other comments, I would appreciate a motion to accept the audit as it's been presented.
I move it.
I'll second.
We have a first by Councilor One, a second by Council, Vice Mayor Tillman. Janet, if you're around, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember One?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Aye.
Mayor Clovin?
Aye. And with that, action item nine A is complete. And we're going to move on to action number, item number nine B, which is to adopt a resolution appropriating thirty thousand dollars from the rainy day fund in fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two to engage Strategy Research Institute for the research related to potential tax measure in the November twenty twenty two ballot. With that, I'll pass it on to you, Rena.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am going to, you think I would have this more smoothly organized by now. I'm going to share my screen and just, I have a brief presentation for this item on the potential tax measure. So I'm hoping you can now see my screen regarding just a few items. Thank you. I see a thumbs up. I appreciate that. Nonverbal communication, always good over Zoom. So I wanted to cover just a few items for the item before you this evening. We had a significant amount of discussion last council meeting about this. But there are some things that are in addition to what, what was presented the last time. So a couple of additional considerations for this potential November ballot measure. First, essentially, all of the property tax related options open to the city rely on the need for a two thirds voter approval rather than a simple majority, regardless of whether the proceeds are targeted or not. I wanted to clarify that because there, there was a lot of conversation around this and under post Prop two eighteen, any property tax, any partial tax is considered a special tax. And so everything falls under a special tax vote requirement. And the only simple majority tax options open to the city are a transactions in use tax or a utility user tax. If no new revenues are approved, the city would need to begin expenditure reductions immediately to avoid the overuse of one time resources such as reserves. The majority of city expenditures are for labor to run city functions. There is relatively little other that can be reduced. And so that makes it immediate and significant if there are actual expenditure reductions that are required. Staffing is very thin across the board in Clayton, meaning that there are very few functions where there's more than one person performing a given duty. Maintenance and police are the two where there are multiple incumbents performing similar duties. Most functions are handled entirely by one person. That means that it's a lot more difficult to spread work out across other folks if a position is eliminated. Recommendations for reductions would also be difficult to make without significant reductions in work capacity, meaning those services that we could provide the community. Many of those things may seem fairly obvious, but they are considerations as we look toward a potential tax measure. So what are the reasons for the recommendation that we did talk somewhat about in the prior council meeting for engaging a polling or research firm? It's costly to put a measure on the ballot and it's really important to have as much information as possible to help refine that effort. It's an investment in achieving the best outcome. While we are concerned about a structural and ongoing deficit between expenditures and revenues, we do have sufficient funding for a one time investment in order to gain this information that we need to make a, an informed decision on, on a ballot measure and what's going to go in that potential ballot measure. So the research firm will provide the city council with statistically valid information to make a more informed decision on the type, amount and structure of a tax measure. Research will provide information on whether there's a willingness to consider a measure and whether the right, now is the right time to pursue. It will achieve information on data around threshold for willingness to pay. We want to make sure that we have the greatest possibility of success. And if we have a sense based on the survey that within a certain range, that seems to be something that might be acceptable to our community, whereas above a certain amount, that's probably not going to go at all. If we know that and if we can narrow in on the range that is the most likely to be acceptable to our community and thus allow us to move forward, that's an important and critical piece of information. The last piece here is just that there's not a lot of time needed, not a lot of time available to gather this intelligence for going to use the November twenty twenty two ballot. And so it's important to begin this research soon, really immediately. The scope of work for Strategy Research Institute, and I should say in the intervening time since the last council meeting, I was able to solicit three proposals from three different research firms. I did interview each of the firms. The cost proposals were essentially all right at about thirty thousand dollars, which is why the recommendation is for a, an appropriation at thirty thousand dollars. And the scope for this work would be assessing the feasibility of a potential ballot measure. And looking not more measures, we really are only going to look at one measure. It's really at multiple tax potential financing mechanisms, which is what the second bullet refers to. We will have the research firm test more than one potential financing mechanism because we do know that if, again, if one financing mechanism gets a resounding, we hate that. And another one gets a, well, you know, we might be willing, blah, blah, blah. Then again, that's a piece of intelligence that we can use to bring to the council as data for a, a decision on a ballot measure. We can test and gain intelligence on how voters may prefer additional revenue to be used. So we can look at what are the core values for the community. And again, this gives us intelligence in, in terms of creating ballot language and, and how we, we reflect our community's values and interests and concerns in crafting that ballot language. And with that very brief presentation, which I'm sure you're all grateful for, I will be happy to answer any questions.
I guess the council, Councilor Wolf, please, you go first.
So, so Rena, how does, how do they go about gaining this information from our, from our residents?
So this is a, a random digit dial telephone survey of approximately seventeen minutes. It would be of about three hundred residents, which for a city our size gives you a level of confidence at about plus or minus five or six percent. So what happens is the consultant will give us a, you know, will draft a survey based on, you know, similar work they've done for other jurisdictions. We will refine that. They will then field that survey through telephone. They search, they have access to voter records that include both landlines and for many voters, cell phone numbers as well. And they will use both landlines and cell phone numbers because we want to make sure that we're not skewing the data by only including landlines since more and more people are moving away from landlines. And so the, the polling firm does this telephone survey on behalf of the city. Whoa. Okay, Frank is coming back into the room. That seems, I can ask Janet to perhaps take that. There we go. Thank you. Weird screen thing. So they follow a script. They, they do the survey and then we get all of the statistical data from that. Sorry, got distracted.
Thank you. That, that scope of work is very, strategy and scope of work is very important in my way of thinking as far as what we're going to need, especially when we're talking about two thirds majority for the parcel tax, which last time we talked about, we needed a fifty percent plus one. So having other possibilities that might pass, I think is really important for us. But that's my comment.
Any other questions from council members?
Yeah, I have one. I'm going through the pack, I'm going through the report in the, in our package right now, but she, but Rena put up a, a slide there on the scope of work and the, the range of the amount of the increase. And I'm trying to find it in here. The only numbers you had on the one that you set up here at the meeting said two fifty or four hundred or I, I want to make sure what the, what the range would be.
It's established. Go ahead, Rena.
Unmute. Unmute. Yes, I'm, now I'm, first I had to unmute and, oh my gosh, all of the things. Okay. So.
Yeah, there, there it is. There it is. Okay, there, it's down there. It's the fourth bullet item.
Yes, yes. That's just an example. That is not necessarily where the survey will go. They will likely test multiple levels. That was just an example that I chose based on picking numbers.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's what my concern was, that there would be a range, you know, say for example, one hundred, starting at a base of one hundred dollars, going up to four hundred dollars. It's two hundred, three hundred, four hundred increments like that. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Council Number One?
Can you, can you clarify a little bit about what the deliverable is here? Because when we talked last time, you know, we talked about a couple of different things. You know, there was discussion around, you know, polling, there's discussion around ballot language writing, and then there is discussion around communication. So the proposal here, like, is it, it sounds like it's just to do polling or is it a mix? Or how, can you clarify? Like, what at the end of the day do we get?
Sure. The, the, this scope of work includes the survey research, all of the findings and their recommendations, including recommendations around potential ballot language. This does not, and, and data on, you know, key concerns of voters, core values, et cetera. It's, it stops at that point. It is not a, it will not design as a logo or determine that we should contact the following for, you know, media outlets, et cetera. So it's not a communications consultant in that regard. But it provides all of the data that you would need to do a communications and outreach strategy, whether that occurs in-house or through a, an additional contract. At this point, the recommendation is just, let's get the intel. I feel very, very strongly about that. And I felt like that was the recommendation I wanted to bring forward. Once we get that intel, I think we'll have a sense of, okay, well, what are the options then for going forward after that?
So then there's potential, there's potential add-on services that will be, that may be recommended after we get information?
They, there would be a separate contract. It would not be the same firm.
Okay, yeah. But I mean, like from a, from a cash outlay perspective.
Correct. There will be a further conversation after the intelligence is gathered as to what assistance, if any, is needed for the next phase.
Okay. And then included in the packet, you said that you had talked to three places. This, you included materials, I believe, from one? Only, is that right? Okay. Is it, are they, are there any big differentiators between the three? Or is this like, is this what they provided indicative of, you know, kind of a general sense of what the others will provide as well?
They're all very similar. In a sense, they each have a slightly different flavor and approach that they use, but they're all very similar. And so this particular firm does some additional analysis on how they characterize likely yes votes and that what they refer to as their go no-go analysis. That is something that SRI does that other firms don't do. There are some nuances that other firms have as well. The other two firms I spoke with and interviewed were Godbe Research and I think it was, I ended up getting recommendations on, on two other firms and I'm, I'm blanking right now on whether it was FM three or EMC. But there was a, a, a third firm that I had a proposal from. I apologize. I can't remember.
That's okay. And did you have interaction with SRI at your, during your time at San Pablo? Because it looks like they listed them on their, on their client list. How, how did, how would you characterize your experience in that capacity?
I was very pleased with their work there. They are incredibly thorough, incredibly Um, I was very pleased with their work there. Um, they are incredibly thorough, incredibly responsive. Um, and um, they uh have a terrific track record. Um, I I will admit that there's a little bit of like, and besides which, I know them. And so I know that they already know me and want to do a good job for us. You know, like, they have some brand loyalty uh that um I am counting on.
Okay.
Any other questions from city council?
Yeah, I have one other I just realized. Back on the former item, uh, it was noted that the rainy day fund sits at about a hundred and seventy plus thousand. Is that correct?
In the prior item, at the end of last year, the rainy day fund balance was at about a hundred and seventy seven thousand. So that in August of last year, the council appropriated about thirty five thousand for the first payment toward the replacement radios for the police.
Right, right.
And then this thirty would take the balance down to about a hundred and thirteen thousand.
Okay, um. All right, all right. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. So, okay, so the hundred and seventy seven does not include the cost of those radios then?
Uh, it doesn't include what was appropriated in August, uh, the thirty five thousand.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no more questions from the city council, uh, we will open this up to public comment. For the public comment, if you would like to talk about this particular item on the agenda nine B, which is uh this proposal for thirty thousand dollars, please do so. And uh, you have three minutes. And please address the city council as a whole. Thank you.
I do have one hand up. Frank, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Am I on?
Frank, you're on.
Thank you. So we want to spend thirty thousand dollars to figure out how we can tax people more. By my calculations, this thing is going to be somewhere one to one point seven million dollars in additional tax revenue. We have a pretty good surplus, which means we probably were overtaxed in the last many years. You know, in the last election, there was a lot of talk about fiscal conservatism. And so far, what I've heard in the last couple of meetings doesn't sound like any kind of fiscal conservatism. Uh, you know, we're going to spend money on this. We've been spending money on other consultants. Thirty thousand here, five thousand there. Pretty soon, we're talking about real money. This is not how you manage a city budget. Sadly, the only guy who really knows about financing will never be permitted to be mayor because of political vindictiveness, but that's a separate matter. None of this sits well with the citizenry. I've talked to several of my uh supporters from the last election, and there's no one anxious to pay more taxes. I don't know how thorough a job we've done at really looking at this city's finances. But after what I heard in the last item about how we can't even close our books on time, this is all very disconcerting. So it's, you guys need to think very carefully about this. People don't like tax increases, especially when we don't know how the money is being spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. And uh, Janet, are there any other hands raised on this issue?
I do have one hand up, just one up. Terry, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Can you hear me?
Greetings, Terry. We can hear you.
Greetings. Excellent. Um, I'll just be brief. I've been hearing a lot this evening um regarding the budget. We've been hearing a lot, I think, in the last year regarding the budget and the challenges that, you know, Rena and Catherine um I've been working through and to a large part inherited. Um, I think that both of them have been doing an excellent job since they've come into our role. Um, but you know, one thing that I I think I've heard loud and clear tonight is the city's been, is being held together with toothpicks and bubble gum. And if we want to really make some, if we want to really address these problems, we need to have good information and we need to arm the people that are willing to do the work with the good information that they need in order to make the best decisions for the city. So, you know, I hope the council will consider um what kind of information you may get from these polling uh activities and whether that's going to help the staff um be enabled to make some of these improvements that they've been describing tonight are so desperately needed. We've got good folks on board. We've had a lot of turnover. Let's help them, enable them to do their jobs. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Terry. Janet, do we have any other hands for this item?
I have a couple more hands raised. Roy, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Roy, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Welcome back, Roy.
Okay, this will be quick. Uh, I'm just kind of a, kind of a visceral reaction to a lot of what we just said um in both presentation and the auditors altogether. Uh, it it's quite worrisome, really, to hear some of the things that were being said on the audits and uh and their completion status or inco- or or currently complete status. Uh, number one, that needs to be really typed up, uh, one, uh, as we all know. And two is that, you know, there there's some, you know, uh, that, you know, the the budget here in Clayton, you know, it's it's been, the the can has been kicked on and on, you know, down the road here. And 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 we're starting to hear a little bit about, well, it was, you know, uh, you know, past years, it's been hot. And it was really white-hot, you know, last year, and the can get kicked again. And so we here, we are here now. So, you know, back up, you know, take the data that's in, you know, that that's there and deal with it. And and uh, you know, there's some opportunity previous years and then going into last year. And there should have been action um altogether. And now we're fighting a time constraint, et cetera. Um, and so I would just uh suggest to you all, you know, be, you know, take action, be proactive and stuff kicking the, you know, the can down the road. And and hopefully, we don't end up here with a, you know, and which I, you know, with some, you know, uh, hand pointing, finger pointing. So that's not necessary. It's unnecessary. Do the job, period, in the best interest of the town. And uh, I don't care, you know, I just, I need to get it done. I need to get it done right. And uh, and and stop with any kind of uh vindictiveness, et cetera. Not only within, say, and 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 not uh within the uh, the council, whether it's planning or the city council, but also the citizenry, you know, got to come together, man. We got to come together and and just make things happen in the best interest, you know. Thank you.
Roy, thank you for those comments. Much appreciated. Janet, how are we doing? Any other hands?
Yes, I do have another hand. William, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Is he unmuting?
Still on mute.
Okay, here I am.
Welcome.
William Jordan here. I'd like to concur with Terry Denzil that we engage in the consultant to promote the tax of two fifty per uh resident. Um, the writing's on the wall. We need to pass a tax. There's so much red on these these sheets here that our city is going bankrupt. I mean, it's insolvent in a few years, and if we don't pass it, uh, you know, it's not going to be uh the greatest thing for Clayton. So um, I hope that the uh city council will hire the thirty thousand dollar consultant and move this forward. And let's get people on board to get us back to solvency. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
You're welcome.
Janet, do we have any more hands for this item?
I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Thank you, Janet. Appreciate that. And with that, public comment on item nine B is closed, and we'll bring it back to the city council for discussion. Is there anybody who would like to talk first? If not, I will say that um I was ambivalent regarding polling last meeting. And uh, since last meeting, I've had multiple conversations with multiple people uh in Clayton on, generationally speaking, from young families to uh retired folk. And there is a clear visceral reaction to the concept of a tax increase. Many people have a, not only know it, hell no, uh, response. And like council member one, uh, when we talk about uh the need, the reality of our expenses uh increasing by three to four percent and our uh revenues only increasing by one percent and how that crosses lines in twenty twenty-three, and that something needs to be done. Uh, whether we reduce services or increase revenue somehow, there there there's, there's an aha moment that happens. Yes, Jeff, you're right. We 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 are aligned in the fact that we believe that we can talk to our citizens and 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 help them understand the necessity of this. Now, that being said, I don't know all eighty-six hundred voters or what their will is in Clayton. And in looking at the different types of tax alternatives um that were are presented that could bring us revenue, I'd rather have a hundred percent of a smaller amount than zero percent of a larger amount. And I'd like to know specifically what type of tax is most palatable, and I don't have an answer to that. It seemed pretty easy last week to go, oh, let's do this. I mean, it just seemed, it seemed logical and easy. Um, that's not the case, and I've since come back full circle. And I really want to know, after talking to Claytonians I have this past couple of weeks, what is the pulse of our town? And I think the polling company is the best way to go about doing so. That's, so that's where I've come to in uh my machinations. Not only in talking to local Claytonians, but also talking to many of the electeds and and cities who've gone through this before in my recent conversations the last two weeks. So that's kind of where I am.
Again, uh, we know what's facing us. Do we need to spend thirty dollars, thirty thirty thousand dollars to do that, to find that out? What we're, what we're asking is, uh, what's the, what's the palatability of a tax increase? Well, that's marginal. Uh, we have to increase revenue. Um, so I guess, and I talked extensively with Raina on this uh this morning in person. And uh, I'm not, I'm still not sure or totally satisfied that what this information will give us, other than it's going to be a challenge to get uh the people of this community to buy into it. And it's a reality that we're going to have to somehow uh convince them that it's the appropriate thing to do by accepting a uh an increase uh in taxes in whatever form. And and there are ranges of of tax uh wages we can do this. But uh, I guess, spending thirty thousand dollars to find out, we want to consider, can, you know, continue to have police services that are local. Two, we want the maintenance of the uh and landscaping of this community to continue. Uh, we have to really, each one of us are going to have to get out there and make the pitch that it is necessary if you, the citizens of this community, want that level of service to continue. So again, I'm I'm having a real challenge on figuring out why um we need to spend thirty thousand dollars to get that answer, which I think we already know. Thank you.
Councilor one.
Yeah, I I guess, I would have really liked, I, obviously, I would have really liked to focus on, like, things that we are um that we really need help with. Like, we we probably do need help with writing ballot language. There's all the rules and and um things to navigate in that process, like that. That seems like a, that seems like something that is, you know, that we get, at the end of the day, we get ballot language. It's great. It'll comply with the law. It'll probably um, it'll probably communicate what we, wherever we end up. So that that to me seems really good. Um, this is, it's kind of asking questions that I think we already know. And I and I think it really does approach, like, the whole, the the concept of of seeing what is most palatable, like, what will people be okay with or, you know, be less not okay with. I, the concept of doing it that way, to me, is is somewhat backwards. Um, I would, I would never ask for people to pay more unless it's absolutely necessary. And if it's absolutely necessary, then whether it's one or two or a hundred or a thousand, it doesn't really matter what's most palatable, because we're going to, we should pick whatever's the minimum absolutely necessary. We can do that without asking anybody any question. We've set a target, what we need, project out what it will take to get there, and that's our number. That, to me, is the first appro- or the the um directionally, how you'd approach it. And then from there, that's what you're going to ask people to do. And then they get a choice. They get a choice to either say yes or no. And we, and and that has nothing to do with the polling. That has, that's like communication or marketing, maybe. I don't even think it's marketing. I think it's just like outreach, right? Um, but the polling itself doesn't, it doesn't change what's required. The fact that someone will like a hundred dollars or, you know, better than they'll like two hundred dollars, it's immaterial to the, to the fact of what we actually need. And so it's, it doesn't, I don't think it really sits well where we're saying, like, we're trying to get the most out of you. That that, to me, is the wrong approach. The approach should be, we've looked at it. This is the absolute mi- like, this is the minimum that we need, and that's all we're going to ask for. Because, you know, if we're going to be asking people essentially to tighten their belts and pony up whatever amount of money, every household, you need to pay more. Um, I I think it behooves us to do the same, and it's a lot harder. It it it's not a good picture. If if we, you know, if I have to go out and I talk to people and I say, hey, you know, cities and city needs help, and here's the, here's the situation, here's the problem. But at the same time, we don't have our house in order, and we, you know, we want to spend money. We've, we've engaged consultants on quite a few things, and it doesn't seem like we are tightening our belt um in the same manner that we're going to be asking people to tighten theirs. And that, to me, is not a good, uh, it doesn't sell as a good story. But I, it it's a lot better to say, we've done the analysis, we know how much we need, and we are, will not ask for anything more than we need, and here's the picture of why. And the, in the staff report, it lays out. And the, in the staff report, it lays out, I thought, you know, very good scenario. Of levels of funding and like, here's the, you know, here are the puts and takes, right? That to me is a much better story. Um, I don't, I don't need, I, I feel like we can determine what that is. And then, you know, separately from that, this wasn't a question, so I didn't ask you earlier, but. You know, on the, the sample material here, I think it's like page two eighty one of the. The agenda packet, so it's way down the list, page fifteen, addendum B. You know, the, the firm, they'd list. They list a number of um, they call it a partial client listing. And they talk about like different, you know, different municipalities and, but. You know, really what you'd want to see here. Is you want to see like, we did polling in X jurisdiction. We predicted Y and the result was Y. Plus or minus Z. Something like that, right? Because then it tells you like, uh, not quite.
One hundred percent, that's in the proposal. Yeah.
Um.
They're very proud of it. So I'm.
I know. I read the wording. I, and maybe I misread it, but I, I was, I was specifically looking for it.
Absolutely. Um, I'll, I'll find the page, but you continue.
Sure. I was looking at, yeah, like I said, I was looking at addendum B, where they had the paragraphs of all the things. If there's a table that says. We predicted X and the result was Y and we were this close, like we were right on, like, that at least like contributes to the um. Predictive value versus like. I don't know.
Three of their proposals, section three point O, so before even the addendum to their proposal.
Did I get too far ahead of it?
It, they talk about the, the predicted um margin of error in a um election and what they actually um. Uh, achieved. Um, and then there's, I know some other places, but I know that that's at least one of those. They, they're, they're extremely proud of their ability. So.
Okay.
I've heard about this for years.
Cool. Yeah, I, I could have easily missed it. I was looking at the table. I was looking for the executive summary. So um, in their addendum. Like a table would be great, but whatever, that's a presentation. Um, but yeah, so I, and that's, that's somewhat neither here nor there. I just, you know. They're not going to tell, I just don't think they're going to tell us. Things that we don't already know. Um, I think we should set the value that we need and um. You know, it's a much harder sell when we're spending money and then asking people for more money. Uh, I, I don't know. I don't have a good answer for that one. So that's my take. I'm not, and I guess I have a. I have a um. I have an overt bias against consultants generally, so there's that as well. Um. So I acknowledge that. That's my own thing, but I just, uh, I. I'm not a fan generally. I think you, you need to buy a service with a specific thing that you, you know, that you just can't do otherwise, but I think we can do this otherwise. So that's where I'm at.
Can I, can I follow up? Uh, so what you're saying, Jeff, is uh. You would see the money better spent on assisting us with crafting the language for the ballot measure and pick the number. That provides us with the uh consistent revenue over time that funds the potential negative.
Yes. I, I think spending the money, like, I'm not supposed to just all spending. Um, but like the ballot language, like we pick the number, we say, hey, we need X. Let's craft a language that supports that. And then we go, and then we make the pitch. Like, we don't need polling for that. Like, now that's why, that's why earlier I asked, like, what is the deliverable? Because if it's like a, a combination where. They do the polling and then they do whatever, and that's what we're buying, like, that's a little bit more palatable, I guess. You know, that seems like it gets a lot better. But if it's just like the polling component, like I, I would pass.
So it is the, the polling and the recommendations on, you know, kind of what and how, et cetera. So um. A, a little bit more than.
Yeah.
Just the polling. Um, I think um, the uh, the other thing is that I don't know. That there is agreement across the community um. As to what the minimum that is needed is. And we don't have a sense of. Potentially what our community feels are those things that fall into the minimum, right? And so when you say we pick a number, we're picking a number based on a certain set of assumptions. And those assumptions are made without the additional data from the research. And so to me, it's. Part of the value of that data is to help us determine. You know, because, I mean, there are a million things we could do and fund that we don't have money to do. And so we're going to have to pick and choose regardless, right? Because the number to fund everything we would have wanted is, is too high to go after regardless. So how do we pick what's needed? And how do we determine what it is that we. Believe collectively is needed. And to me, that's part of that other value of this research is that it gives you that data. To help make that determination rather than just a simple, like, if you do a projection, then this is what the, you know. It's all built on assumptions. So what are those assumptions built on?
Yeah, no. And I, I agree. I think that's, that's fair. But I also think that's what we are elected to do. We are elected to make those choices. And if people are. Is satisfied in some way, or that level of service is different, then they'll say no. And then they, then you get the outcome that you get. So. You know, I think it's, it's pretty clear to make the, you know, we set the number at X. We say, look, if you say yes to this, this is what you get. Do you want that? Or the alternative is, this is the alternative, and that's what you get instead. And then you get to decide. Um, to me. I, I don't know. I, I think I would set it at the barest minimum, and I want to make the argument that this is the minimum. Or sorry, is it minimum? Yes. This is the minimum we need to function for this level of service. But not a dollar more. Not a dollar more. And so this idea like, well, maybe people will be okay with this or that. No. Not a dollar more.
What about the possibility, Jeff, that there are other types of revenues than a parcel tax that may be more acceptable to the voters that we haven't even thought about?
Nothing's big enough. The numbers aren't there.
Well, I mean, it, it's just, just looking at the utility and users' tax, which at six percent brings in eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars.
Not enough.
Is, so the, the, there, there are other options that might be out there. I mean, I don't know what they are. And that's what part of what the polling is, is to see what is available and. What is palatable. I mean, that's, that's the point that is to have data to be able to make a conclusion. Okay, this is where we're going with this.
Yeah, and I think if you had um, I think if you had multiple viable. Uh, like avenues, then that has a little bit more credence. But we have a, our tax base is pretty homogeneous. And these other items. These other potentials, they don't cover it. Unless we're going to do like a cafeteria where we pick and choose and do some of this and some of that. If we're just doing one, there's really only one answer.
I have. How would you suggest that we come up with the figure?
Well, if we look at the, the Safford report. Which.
I mean, they're talking two fifty, three fifty, four hundred, you know. How do we know what people will, will want to do?
I think we have a discussion around what the minimum level services are. Determine what the cost is of that. Put a riser on it. And that's, that's the number.
Well, you know, I pay, I pay people to make money for me every day. Uh, and uh. So, you know, you're looking for a level of even speculative service. Um. And uh, I, you know, I have, I have some concerns with regard to the communications part of this, and I know I've talked about it last, last week. Um, I, I'd like this conversation in that I'm uh. Deciding one way or another, which way to go with this. Um, but I, I keep coming back to the fact that unless we know. That we've got to give ourselves the best chance of getting more than zero. And because the city is in, in. Some pretty deep trouble right now, and we need to gain some revenue. And um, with the people I've talked to, I think it may depend also on where, which neighborhood you live in, in this, in this community. But when I talk to my neighbors uh over the last two weeks, um, there's. There's a, hey, let's, let's do what we need to do. Let's, you know, get up and, and, and put some money into this thing. So I think it's going to come down to what is the best cross section and what, what is the best number and what do we know when we know it? Um, maybe the polling company will give us that opportunity. Um. But uh, uh, yeah, I, I'm uh, I'm leaning more toward the polling company than away from it at this point. Uh, in that we got to spend money to make money. I'm a citizen of Clayton too. I mean, I don't like taxes. But I know where we are. And uh, I'm not sure that even just the minimum amount of services is enough, especially to sustain us. I, i- into the, into the, even near future. So uh, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, but remember, this is not about taxes. Exactly. I mean, it's, it's adjacent to taxes. This is about spending money on a consultant to do the research, right? Like, I don't, I think we have fairly um. Alignment over the necessity for increased revenue. So this is really one particular item. On what the process is to get there. And so I don't want to, I don't want to muddy those two things because they're different.
But it gives us the information that we need to make that number choice. I mean, sure, we're elected, we're elected to do this. Um, but boy, we don't want to get this wrong.
I don't, I don't think it does. I think it gives you information around what people will be comfortable with.
But which people? See, that is, again, I think it depends on what neighborhood you live in.
Say it's all people. It doesn't really matter. I mean, like, if all the people, if you got a hundred percent perfect accuracy and they said. We will go no higher than fifty dollars a parcel. I mean, that's great. Fifty dollars a parcel doesn't cut it. It doesn't even matter. Like, that, that would be completely, that would be interesting yet useless information. Because it's not actionable. What we know is the number that we need. We can pick that. We have our current assumptions. We're basing this, all the red numbers are based on assumptions. They're based on pro forma and projections of both what we expect to happen and what has happened in the past. Past performance does not indicate future performance, sure. But at the same time. You know, that's, we, we, we're, that is the model that we're operating under. So. We, we know what balances it. We say like, hey, we super need a new sergeant in our police force for this type of thing. We need. Like, our maintenance crews. Don't have enough time between fixing mainline breaks at the community park to covering the city or whatever, or they can't flex up during times. So we need. You know, point six FTEs for eight months out of the year or something like that. We know what that is. We know that, we probably know that, well, we don't all need to drive like. You know, the police cruisers don't need to be driven by robots and all this other stuff. That is not a need. So we, we determine what the need is, and that's what we sell. But the polling thing doesn't sell that. It has nothing to do with need. It's only about what are you comfortable paying? I don't care. That's not, that doesn't matter. What matters is what does the city need to function and be solvent? That's the, that to me is the focus. So I think approaching it from a polling perspective, like, what are people okay with is backwards. That, that's not how to approach it. It's, I know the solution. Help me get there. And by doing that, I can sell it.
But historic, but historically, Rena, and you can answer this, uh, how is this done in other communities? Is, is that a backward approach?
Um, it. It is typically done with polling upfront to give you intel on how to craft this. Um, to craft a, a, a measure. I think, I think that it is. Because there are so many assumptions underlying what we, defining quote unquote what we need. I, I think it's, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg as to say, we can determine. Kind of numerically what we need and separate it somehow from the value our community places in different types of services. And I think we need intel on those um, kind of values, concerns, et cetera, in order to help determine. What? What is the minimum that's going to um. You know, meet the community's expectation. I don't think it's. M- m- my perspective is that it's not just a number. Um, a, a calculation that is separate from some of those other. Non-quantitative items.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, we just passed, not just, just is the wrong word. I think we recently passed like an extension of the LMD tax. Right? I forget what year that was. Was that twenty sixteen?
Sixteen?
Yes, alright. Um. Did we engage polling for that?
That was not a new um tax. That was an extension of an.
It was an extension, so not apples, not perfect, not a perfect uh analogy, but I don't think we did, right? That's my, that's my recollection.
We did not do polling on that. It was an extension of an existing special tax. So it is both a special tax as opposed to something general. And it was an extension of a twice over approved um special tax.
Yeah, and I, I don't know. I, they, we, we knew the LMD needed to be extended. If, we said, look, if you want the parks to be maintained in their current fashion. The, you know, parks in. Well, the district, let's say. It wasn't the parks. So, yeah, not the parks. If you want the district to be maintained in the fashion, then approve the thing. Now, I was, that's the argument. Um, I think that one went pretty well. Like, people like the, the landscape district. They like the trail system. People like. There are things that people enjoy, and that's not a, that's a easy argument. Not easy. That is an easier argument to make. When we have demonstrated frigality.
Can I jump in now?
Please do.
Ryan. So I have a couple of um, of, a couple of comments. I, I don't necessarily know that we. Um, if we knew what the number was, I'm curious on why this wasn't done by prior councils, and I'm not trying to throw shade, but. I understand from the last conversation that we had that you didn't want to do too early because it might not have been palatable and it wasn't necessary yet, and let's wait until. It's actually time to have to do it. We now know that we're under the gun and we have to do it to what Mr. Correa was saying. Um, I, I think that that's a bad way to operate because I think people in our, in our town are smart enough to understand. Uh, and be educated that, hey, this is an issue and, and they're letting us know that it's coming down the pike. Um, and they're well aware of it. So if we knew what the number was, or we know what the number was, I don't understand why this wasn't done previously. And then further, I'm not understanding why we wouldn't use this firm. Um, because to me, I can gain some more information when it comes time to do the budgeting in June. Um, if there are residents who are saying that, you know, let's just say that we come up with the number of between two fifty and four hundred, and we outline all this, these resources that they can or cannot have at each level. Um, if there are residents who are saying, I absolutely will not pay for, excuse me, the four hundred dollar parcel tax. Then we know we can't afford to do some of the things that we need to do. For example. Raises. We have already talked about um. Making sure that we can pay a, a, a higher salary for our employees. We know that that's an issue. And we're talking about staffing an, an additional police lieutenant. Can't do that. Things that we know that we want to do, we know that we can't afford to do. Or if there's services that we have to cut because there's a lower level. Um, that they're willing to sustain. We need to know that as well as we're going into the budget session. So. I think that we can glean a lot of information from this polling. Um, I, I. Hate paying taxes myself. I think every single person that's listening in right now does. Um. But I also recognize that we, given the prior item nine A, that we have some issues that we're trying to tackle. Um, my concern is that, one, we're going to be taxing the people that we already have. Um. Lots of stuff we talked about. Um, we've kind of, you've kind of gone, done a one eighty, Jeff, with the, we don't want to have, we, we already know, let's come, let's plagiarize, I think, is what you used. Other cities and what language they use for a ballot measure. Um, I completely disagree with plagiarism, plagiarism as a whole. Um. But I got what you were trying to say. I don't think that that's the route that we should go. Let's use the, this resource. Get the, the numbers that we need, the verbiage that we need. I don't think that that's the route that we should go. Let's use the, this resource, get the, the numbers that we need, the verbiage that we need, utilize all the information that we can get and all the intel so that it can help us determine what we need to do for our upcoming budget issue. Um, so I understand it's not palatable. I heard people when they were calling in saying that they don't want to pay taxes. I've heard it from other people as well. Um, as all five of us, I think, have, that nobody wants to do it. But at the end of the day, it is up to us five to make the hard decisions, and this is one of the hard ones, right? We have to spend some money to get the intel that we're going to need that can serve us going forward. Um, and I don't think that it's a waste of money, and I don't think it's a waste of time. If it were that easy to just pick the number and make those decisions, I think that would have been done already.
You know, the, uh, five of us voted uh, just very recently to raise the signatory uh, power of this, of the uh, city manager. Um, and thirty thousand was the uh, was the consultant um, cap. And so we almost wouldn't need to have this conversation if this had already been uh, budgeted. Maybe next year, we wouldn't even have this conversation. She could go off and uh, and do a contract for thirty thousand. And since we put that cap on, if we weren't serious about thirty thousand as the, as the number, why did we do it?
Well, isn't it interesting that the number is thirty thousand?
Well, I know it just came out of the blue, but it's never
That, that's not relevant to this conversation, so let's talk about what's relevant right now and, and, and because that's a non-budget item, so it didn't need to be, have approval from the city council, and that's why it's here in front of us tonight. Um, Jeff, if people were like you and I and looking at things from a black and white standpoint, and here's, here's X, and here's Y, and here's how we get from X to Y, it's, it's, it's pretty darn simple. Um, I, I, I get what you're saying. Trust me, I totally understand what you're saying. What I'm thinking is that there are so many people who are not binary like that and don't think in that, that way, that they're, there, there's, there's so many shades of gray within Clayton that we don't have a pulse on. It's not as simple as, I, I, I love it to be as simple as what you're saying. I would truly love it to be as simple what you're saying. And what, what I am saying is that I'm thinking is that we will have data we don't have. And with data, we have a stronger position towards an ask. And I get, it seems counterintuitive because I've heard the conversation, you're spending money to, to, to make it, and, and it, I, I hear what you're saying. But the, you, you have a strong reason, we need data to figure out what the best thing it is that we're going to do. It's not as simple as, as, as you, as, as you're making it out to be. And I found that out from talking to several people, including some senior citizens about a cover Joe, who say, you're the guy who wants to raise taxes. Well, no, I just want to do what's right to keep our city a premier small city in Northern California. And um, I want to do it the best way possible, and I need the data to be able to make that argument.
Yeah, I, maybe we're talking to different folks. I don't know. The most of the folks, I guess, you know, it's a, it's a it's a function of who you're talking to. Like, most of the folks I talk to, they're they're pretty anti-government generally, I would say, and they, they hate taxes more than you, I'm just gonna guess. But um, I've never not been able to make this argument. Um, it's because, and it doesn't take that long, because it's, it's a pretty, it's pretty clear outcomes on either end. I say, you know, when, you know, Holly, you were saying about the, when we're doing budget, you know, the budget's going to be due uh, around the May-June timeframe, if I recall correctly. We, there's, we would not, it would be irresponsible to like bake into the budget potential revenue increases, like for next year, when we're talking twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, which never rolls off the tongue. I would just say FY twenty-four. When we're talking FY twenty-four, um, none of these will, should be baked in. I mean, you could do a mid-year adjustment if the thing passes. But, you know, at the June number, at the adopted budget at the beginning of fiscal, it, none of those will be there. So you know, I, I don't know, I mean, I don't, there's nothing more I have on that. I just, I just think, you know, if we're, like I said, if we're going to be asking people to kind of shake their couch cushions and, and tighten up, um, it's, it's not a good look if we're not doing the same.
Well, I think that's part of the reason why I discussed about the possibility of options. Somehow a graduated, rather than one size fits all um, tax, and that's kind of, you know, something that the polling company can shake out as well in some of their conversations. And I don't have that data. And I don't, I, and if there's some way we can, we can have a graduated uh, or proportionate tax, I, I would love to know that. But that, it's rather than a, a flat parcel tax, something like that. There's, there's, these are conversations that need to be had. I think the polling company is just the person to have those conversations.
And whether or not we can do graduated is a function of law and not poll.
Well, and a- a- again, the, 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 these, these things we just need to look at, um, uh, is, is, is it, I, I don't have the answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, that's literally just, is this allowable in the law? That, that's a function of what are we allowed to do. I mean, the table that, you know, was assembled here in Safford, I thought was great. Um, you know, it, it clarified some information that we, you know, that we thought we had before. And so to the extent that we want to approach different things, like saying, hey, can we tier the tax, whatever, that has nothing to do with polling. It doesn't matter. No, the poll, poll results are, don't, don't inform you of that answer. The answer is, is it allowable? I'd ask Mala. I'm not going to put her on the spot right now. We could, we could have a list of questions, and she could go to her colleagues who are experts in this matter probably. Um, but that's, you know, that's not a poll question.
I have a follow-up question. Once we get this data, what are we gonna do? Sit down, look at it, and make a decision? Then the next is, how much is it going to cost us to put that into a ballot form? Are we going to have to pay more, or is that included in the thirty thousand?
Um, we will get recommendations on ballot language from that. Ultimately, the ballot language will have to pass muster with BBK in terms of the seventy-five words that we are allowed to do. Um, but we will get recommendations um, from uh, the polling uh, on um, potential ballot language. Um, there is the, also the additional cost of putting it on the ballot itself for the voting, which is another twenty-ish thousand, depending on the ultimate number of registered voters and the cost to the county elections department.
Those are set by statute as well, right? Or those are essentially prescribed costs for those things?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it, county elections adds it all up and says it's this much per registered voter. And so then we pay them pretty much whatever they tell us it is per registered voter.
There any other comments from the city council? If not, uh, I've ended this discussion. We can have, uh, if, if there's a motion for approval uh, of retaining a polling consultant, entertain that at this moment. I think the data is, is valuable. I think that the, I, in, in the conversations that I've had, not only with citizens, but with other elected officials from other cities, I think the, the data is valuable. And I will move to uh, retain the consultants for the polling, for the information.
I'll second.
Can we have a first and we have a second?
Proper verbiage for the motion, or is that fine?
I will move uh, that we adopt a resolution appropriating thirty thousand dollars to the ready-made fund for agreement for strategy research institute to provide research to potential tax measures for November twenty twenty-two ballot.
Second.
Then we have a first and a second. Do you call the roll?
Councilmember Diaz?
No.
Councilmember Juan?
No.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Yes.
Mayor Clevin?
Yes. With that, item number nine A is closed, and we go to under, item number ten. Closed session, which there is none. Go to item number eleven, council items to be discussed at future meetings.
Just a point of order was in nine B.
Nine, nine B, I did it again. Nine B, actually, number nine B was closed. Going to uh, not, text, item ten is closed, and we're at item number eleven, council items, please, for future agenda. Alrighto, um, I have a couple of things I'd like to throw out there, possible future conversations. CEMEX or CEMEX is about ready to do an EIR, present their EIR on their revised reclamation plan um, for their site. I think for the most part, all of us have been there and, and visited the site at some point and were, and I think it I would like to en- entertain the idea of an ad hoc committee to meet with them to discuss their ER, EIR, and bring back our findings uh, as, as part of the conversation for the presentation of the EIR to the city council. And um, I'm thinking somebody along the lines of uh, me and Jim would be very good on that, on that, because we both have interest in that, what's going on there. That's something for future agenda to consider. And uh, regarding this tax measure, uh, we're coming up, and the data that's going to be coming from the uh, polling company. It wouldn't be a bad idea just to consider having another ad hoc committee. Uh, two of our council members, and maybe our finance uh, director, to uh, have a discussion about the data and what, what it, what it is, and be basically an ambassador to the city council for review and talking to the public about that. Um, before bringing it back to city council for discussion. Uh, this way we get more community participation in discussion about those tech, that, 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 that data. Um, that's my two items for future agenda of consideration. Is, are there any others? If not,
I have one, Mayor. Um, the only that I can think of is um, at one of the next two council meetings discussing the calendar in April. Um, in regards to the April fifth meeting being during the week of spring break. I'm not sure what everyone's plans are for those of us with children, but it can be at a future meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Tillman. If there are no other items on the agenda, we'll move to item number twelve, adjournment. It is now nine forty-two, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. We'll see you at the next meeting.